Okay, it is seven o'clock and I will call the September 27th, 2021 School Board Meeting to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Anita Jagazinski, if you would do the roll call, please.
Carrie Dunlap.
Here.
Cheryl Hancock.
Here.
I am here.
Chris Lau.
Here.
Rebecca Reber.
Here.
Brian Wulpad.
Here.
Emily Zach.
Here.
And Jennifer Deek.
Here.
Okay, with seven of the seven School Board members present, I would declare a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. It has been posted, distributed, and sent to local media. With that in mind, are there any changes to the agenda at this time? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published. Anita, is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, Chris, motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public participation. This is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to address the board relative to any item at this time. We ask that when called upon, they come forward and they observe a five-minute time period, which Anita will be helping to time as the board clerk, and to follow the policy as established by the district related to public participation. And I know we have a little one, Elise Evelyn Venner. I think we're going to have her go first. Oh, I thought she was a little one. I'm so sorry, Elise. And you can take your mask off to speak if you want.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Elise Venner and I'm a student attending Holman High School. Masks are doing more harm than good. Seven hours a day during school, three more hours of after-school sports or activities. For five days a week, my classmates and I are forced to wear a sweaty, germ-filled mask. If you think a small piece of cloth is going to help the spread of COVID, then you need to think again. I completely agree that we should be doing things like washing our hands, coughing and sneezing into our elbow, staying home when you're feeling sick, and caring about our overall health. But I don't see a single person wearing their mask all the way up for the full time of being at school. COVID is not going to disappear anytime soon, whether you wear a mask or not. I think we need to protect people, but I don't agree with how we are dealing with them. Anyone with a pre-existing health condition obviously can be affected by COVID, but their health can also be threatened by just a common cold. If you're truly scared of COVID, then wear a mask, get vaccinated, social distance, and do what makes you feel the safest. But like many, I would like to have that choice of what I do. I'm speaking up for most of the students who feel the same as me, but won't say anything because they are scared that they will be told that they are selfish or inconsiderate. I'm asking this. Please take your approach to wearing masks into consideration for a change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Lindsey Newman. Lindsey Newman.
Good evening, Lindsey Newman. I just wanted to express mostly to all the moms and dads that have already spoken or that will speak on behalf of their children, whatever side they're taking on the masks issues or anything else that has come up, that it takes a lot of courage. It takes some fierce tenacity, some fire in their soul, and some true conviction in their heart to speak up. Moms and dads, keep fighting for your children. I want to be kind, to be peaceful, and to respect each other. But like most parents, I take full responsibility for my child's health, their well-being, and yes, their education. There's a time and a place for conventional medicine and private or public education, as well as other social activities. But we as parents are gifted these children into our care. So I'm sure this is why we all feel so passionate about how our children are treated and what exactly they are told to do. As homeschool mom, for 17 years, I don't take it very lightly sending my children into the public education system or any education system. Because I've been with my children around the clock and I know my children, how they learn, signs of sickness, how to support them. We parents who are speaking out and the silent ones supporting us know our children. Although this is something I have been prepping my children for since I started schooling them, my goal was and is to have my children be alight and to stand firm in their convictions, all while being part of this community. However, it is still my job as their guardian and mother to guide them and teach them in truths. All of these things play a huge role in who they are and how they will behave. When their known truths and convictions are being tested, it makes for a very challenging time. My boys are facing these challenges daily and they have very few options and little support within the administration to uphold these truths known to them. I am so very proud of them, though, and I pray over them daily to remain respectful, to guard their truths that they know, and to stand firm in the beliefs that they have. Being a peacemaker is not easy in such a divisive time that we have right now. And I said this last meeting, but I will repeat it again, that fear is a liar. Fear has no place in our homes or in a school setting. Darkness and evil are the enemies that want nothing more than to steal, kill, and destroy all things good. Sickness, death, illness are inevitable in life, and we all face them, but what we cannot do is live in fear of them. I will not claim that having any fear will keep me from sickness or death. Jesus said in this life we'll have trouble. He never said we'd be spared from any of it. But I am saying that my hope and that my faith and my deep convictions in masks and vaccines, for my own personal convictions, will uphold that. Masking, distancing, and vaccines are being used to divide all of us. There's plenty of science on both sides of these issues. So what I would do is ask you, School Board, for Jill, Matt, and Dr. Mueller, are you open to hearing both sides and not just the FDA, the WHO, and the CDC? The federal, state, and local guidelines don't follow all of the information that is out there. There are other sources out there. And I'd love to know if you've seen them or have considered them. If you are, I would think it would be great for you to address the community about what you've read on both sides, so that we can see and hear from you, because it would bring more unity to the community if you've addressed both sides of the truth. COVID is here to stay. And how you are addressing some of the disrespect and trouble you're having with students because they are not being heard and unable to have full control over their health and well-being can be an issue. All we want is for our children to have an unbiased, non-political affiliated education, to have teachers and staff not pushing one side of some of these already divisive issues. For our children, if you've valued for who they are, what they believe, and for our children to not be swayed beyond their true convictions because of what staff members say to be their personal truths regarding these overly sensitive issues already. I say all this because we have already had discussions with the principals regarding teachers overstepping their job as teachers of a subject matter they are supposed to be teaching. Anything beyond the subject the teacher is supposed to be teaching is not appropriate for the classroom. Math, history, science, language arts already have plenty of subject matter to teach. One last thing I'd like to address is our pledge that we set at the beginning. Our pledge is one nation under God. I'm sure some of this may be offensive to some of you, but if you ever stop to think about it, our country was founded on Christian principles and that is where a lot of our convictions fall within. And that's why we have asked for some of these religious exemptions and any of that to fall on our convictions. So we have all authority. He dictates our future. He sees all and He knows all. I will not stop fighting for my children's deeply held convictions, as mine are the very same. All of my life, God has been very faithful to us and He is in this battle with all of us. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next is Josh Newman.
Good evening. Good evening again. Good to see you all. I'm gonna make it short and sweet. We've asked for a number of times for the metrics. How do we know when we're able to take masks off of our children? And we did see those. And when I met with you guys individually, again, great time, great conversation, genuine, you know, good people that want the best for our students. I don't doubt that at all. But all of you assured me that you don't want masks on our kids, that as soon as we can get them off, we're gonna get them off. We don't like teaching with masks on. We don't like learning with masks on. It makes life difficult for everybody. So the metrics got released, and if you do the math down, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but it's two students in our school district that are positive for COVID and everybody keeps the masks on. So that's when you break it down from the per hundred thousand. We have two students in the high school, our family. So if you really, the metrics are not realistic here. We are gonna have our kids in masks forever. If we're going by the metrics that you guys are seeing that we're going by, it's not realistic. So we either say this is new forever because COVID's not going away. The infamous Dr. Fauci, just last week in an interview came out from pre-pandemic when he was saying, the interviewer, hopefully you all saw that, "Do you recommend people wear masks?" And he started laughing. Paranoid, actions of paranoia, like putting on masks on, will do nothing to protect you from viruses. That's what Dr. Fauci said in that interview. So I think it's, you know, we're on week three of the NFL season, week four of the college season, where my boys are watching 80,000 people pack football stadiums with no masks on. We've talked about this. Inside baseball stadiums, all these places, and the least vulnerable population amongst our society, we're masking them up. We look like crazy people, okay? I know we're doing it because we want to protect them. These aren't gonna protect them and they're gonna be on forever if we don't re-look at the metrics. So please, let's step back and be realistic. My kids think adults are crazy. We're losing credibility with our children, okay? And it's very hard to explain why they can watch people on TV, in the Emmys, nobody wearing masks. They can watch our politicians hang out, no masks. They can watch our professional athletes, no masks. They can watch hundreds of thousands of people every weekend on the TV without masks on, and they have to put them on in school, in class. It is obnoxious. Let's raise our game. Let's be logical. Let's treat them with respect. They're the least vulnerable to this disease. Let's just be logical and realistic about this. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Next I have Barb Wench. Good evening, Barb.
Hello, Barb Wench, N6905 Pine Lane. What a difference two weeks makes. Since I last stood here in front of you, two families in this state have suffered insurmountable loss. In the last 13 days, two Wisconsin teens have lost their lives due to complications from COVID-19. First, a 13-year-old from Fort Atkinson. Fort Atkinson Middle School has 635 students. Holman Middle School has 905. Last Wednesday, a 17-year-old from Mondovi, a one-hour drive from here, died. Mondovi High School has 266 students. Holman has 1,139. Coincidentally, neither Fort Atkinson nor Mondovi had mascaros in place in their districts. As I have said to you time and time again, you, the board and administration, have chosen to do the right thing. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, last week, children under 18 made up 26.7% of all positive COVID cases in this country. As of today, there are 13 positive cases in this district. I don't want to imagine what the numbers would be if our students weren't wearing masks. It was mentioned two weeks ago that the mental health of our children is being negatively impacted by fear instilled in them by having to wear a mask. I don't agree with this because, as a parent, it is my job to make sure that they grow and to be good humans. We are wearing a mask because it is the right thing to do. We are wearing a mask because it is the responsible thing to do, because we are helping our neighbors. We aren't just thinking of ourselves. We do it. There is no fear involved, unless the parents make it something to be feared. As a result, the children of the people I know don't make issue of this mask. So I'm just going to leave you tonight with another quote because thanks to my exceptional English teachers here at Holman High School, many years ago, I often turned to literature. So this time, I'm going to leave you with Ernest Hemingway's "For Whom the Bell Tolls." "For what are we born if not to aid one another?" Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Leslie Clements.
Hello, good evening, Leslie Clements. You have my address. First, I want to say thank you to the Newmans. I agree with you 100%. I love that you guys come here every week and don't stop. I work in healthcare and I do not wear a mask and I've hardly ever had to wear a mask during all of COVID, from day one. And I find it terrible that my kids are being forced to wear one in school. I'm going to jump to a different index card. And I don't think you're gonna change your minds. I don't know what leash is on you. I just, I don't think you're gonna change your minds. Week after week, month after month, I don't think it's gonna happen. So why can't we do some other things? During this, maybe we're gonna change our minds, or maybe the metrics will end up turning out differently. We were, we were online last year for maybe four hours. The students would have in with their teachers for four hours. Right now, our students are in school for seven, with a mask on, minus lunch. So I'd like to suggest that we have a 15-minute morning break outside. Get them some fresh air. Why can we only do this in elementary school? The middle and high schoolers need it, I think, more than the elementary students who's, is going on and off their face all day. And why can't we have an exact time outside after lunch? I know many middle schoolers that have had zero to 10 minutes outside after lunch. They should have at least 15 to 20 outside. And an afternoon break, a quick 10 to 15-minute afternoon break. There's no reason that this can't be implemented. This will give them fresh air and a break from their masks. For any kids that want to keep them on, they can. They probably already are when they're outside. This will help them reduce headaches, anxiety, sadness, loneliness. And right now, they're not getting any to maybe 15 and maybe 30 if their gym teacher happens to take them outside. This is something we can all agree is important and it's easy to implement. As quickly as you change requirements to mandates is as quickly as you can implement this for all kids to get fresh air outside. We don't need to take a long time to make this change. Encourage your teachers to teach outside. Have gym class outside. We have the best fall and early winter weather around. The students will love it. The teachers will love it. A student in the middle school today had his first gym class outside, today. He's had gym since the start of the school year, but today was the first time his gym teacher took him outside. Why? Encourage your teachers to go outside. Help them. They're sick of scolding students. They're sick of scolding the students to keep their mask up over their nose. "I'm gonna have to give you suspension. Get that mask on." They're sick of it. And we all know, fresh air fuels the brain. It's just gonna help our students learn more and keep that information in their head. Kids that want to keep their mask on, like I said, it's their choice when they go outside, if they want to keep it on. So just be honest with us. This crazy metric, will this ever change? Just be honest with us. If it's not going to and you don't see it happening, let's find some other ways to keep our kids learning in the best environment possible. Fuel their brain with fresh air. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tony Zach. Tony Zach.
Tony Zach, you guys got my address. I'm tired. I'm tired of showing up to these board meetings. I'd rather be sitting at home, watching a Brewer game, or chilling with my wife, but week after week, every two weeks, it's like, I gotta go to this board meeting and fight for my kids and fight for the kids that are out there that have to wear these masks over their faces. And it just, I'm beat up. I just feel like, no matter what we say here, it just falls in deaf ears again and again and again. And I wonder, who has the power? Do you guys have the power as the board to make any decisions anymore? Do we, as parents, taxpayers, and kids in the school, have any say anymore? Who's making these decisions? Apparently, it's not you guys, because I would think that at least the seven of you would actually look at the numbers and say, okay, we can, we can make some things happen here, or we can at least make masks optional. That's all, that's all I've been saying since April, showing up here. Sometimes, me and only a couple other people are speaking. And then, two weeks ago, we had, what, 100 people here, 75 people here, and kept you guys here all night. And I'm sorry to have to, that you guys had to do that. But who has the power to make these decisions? I know that we have this task force that came up with the metrics, and I don't believe it's two people that have to be, that have to test positive for COVID in the school. I believe it's the district. So apparently, that would be two out of 20,000. Chris, I saw you shake your head no earlier. But I would hope that when, when you guys finish up today, you can kind of break down those metrics, so it's not, you know, 100,000 people, so it's easy for us to see that we have about 20,000 people in this district. Let's say 25,000 all in. Is it, is it two people per that 20,000? Is it 10 people to get it? So we have options for our children, seven through 12, to have the masks on as optional. Again, this comes back to masks being optional. This is giving the parents the right to make that choice. We are being forced to wear a mask in this room. Our kids are being forced to wear a mask at school. I'd like to know some of the issues that have probably come up in the last year and a half, like drug abuse, failing grades for children, mental illness, suicide attempts, and just retaining children, sticking around in the Holman School District. I'd like to know if we're gonna talk about any of those issues, because those are really tough ones to think about and address. And how about all the things that don't require masks? Since this pandemic started, I have traveled all over the United States. I've been in airplanes. I've met with hundreds and hundreds of people. And I should be dead. I should have died many times. But I haven't, and I haven't worn my mask, and I should be dead. But I'm not. And there's a whole lot of other people that haven't died from this either. And yes, there are, there are kids that have died from this. About 415 out of 75 million children. The, the numbers are not adding up. And again, there are no masks. There are no mask studies showing that masks work on kids, especially these. You're gonna give me this thing? Now, if you were requiring N95s for all our kids and providing those, I would say we might have a point. Maybe we could get a point there. But this, you're gonna make me wear this thing in here? And I wear it under my nose every time and I get scolded by the people who are watching me. Anita, I know you're watching me. And I'm just, I'm just fed up with it. And for all those people that have contacted me who want to remain anonymous, the teachers, and the children, and the parents, and the police officers that I've talked to, people need to hear, they, they need to hear it. And I'm gonna continue to show up and I'm gonna continue to fight for my kids and I'm gonna continue to fight for this mask to get off, at least make it optional. That's all, that's all we've asked. So as a, as a father who feels like he has absolutely no voice at all, I just, I, I'm frustrated. I'm frustrated along with these people here and the hundreds and hundreds of other people that don't show up because they're afraid. So again, I'll call out to those people to show up. And I'll call out to those patriots to stand up for your freedoms, because this is about freedom. And it's about giving, giving the power back to the parents, the taxpayers, and the kids in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Wesley? Jennifer Wesley?
Jennifer Wesley, and you have my address in front of you. The following is something that another person asked me to share. This comes from a grandmother of seven grandkids in the district, who also has a family member that is a childcare provider. So she's very aware of where the kids end up when they're sent home to quarantine. This is what she had to say. Quote, "I cannot be at the school board meeting. We're out of town, but something I would like shared. Already this year, I know three elementary students who have been sent home because of close contact. All three of these children had no symptoms. All three of these young children are not offered any virtual or any type of teacher-student learning. They were off five to six days. An average school day is seven hours. So on average, each child lost 35 to 40 hours of critical learning in one week. Now do the math. If in each case, at least three to four more students were in each group, a lot of hours of crucial learning was lost. This should scare all of us. So I believe a plan needs to be put in place to quarantine at school or someplace to continue their education. We're told that masks work. With that in place and social distancing and the budget for sanitizing our schools, we should not be sending them home and denying them their education. If we know going forward, this will continue, if we know going forward, this will continue and we need to do something," end quote. Whether you want to hear it or not, the reality is, many of these young, elementary-age students being pulled out of the classroom are ending up with a childcare provider. A childcare provider that likely has other young, non-school-aged children in the same home. It's been over 18 months since this virus began finding its way through us. 18 months ago, parents were afforded the opportunity to stay home and schools were making accommodations for virtual learning. From what I understand, this, these accommodations are no longer available. Yet we're still picking these healthy kids out of their classroom and expecting parents to take more time off work. When I was school age, I had to furnish a doctor's note in order to be out of school for consecutive days. Additionally, my parents had to furnish their employer with a doctor's note in order for them not to lose their job. No doctor is gonna issue a note for a healthy student. Your quarantine policy is not saving lives. It's messing up the lives of all those that are affected. Now with Josh and Tony, they are not alone in trying to understand the math of these metrics that you guys put forth. I worked hard today and sharpened my pencil to figure out the math myself. What I came up with is that, for all students, including the youngest, there needs to be less than 9.99 new cases in a seven-day period among the entire population of the district. Now, when I looked it up, the entire population of the district, students and non-students, is around 20,000. So the per 100,000 threw me off and I was trying to do the math. Well, there's only 20,000 in the district, so it's 20%. So it's gotta be 20% of 9.99, which is just under two. But we don't have fractions of people, so let's just round it off to two. Two people per 20,000, and we are staying masked. Those two people could be two shut-in retirees that have no relationship to the district. We could have every single student and staff member in this district perfectly healthy, no cases within the school buildings. But if there's two somewhere else in the community, within the district boundaries, we're still masking? Am I right? Is that how, please, clarify the math. Also, to Leslie's point, Prairie View put up has this beautiful outdoor classroom pavilion. I've never seen it used. It's time for the kids to get outside and take their classrooms outside while the weather affords us to. Next thing, I saw a post the other day that the kids shot by gunshot in Chicago is greater than the kids that have died of COVID. That is scary. That's all I have.
And our final speaker tonight is Kristy Tweed.
Hi. Kristy Tweed, N6746 McCurdy Road. I do have a bit of a cough. It's not COVID. It's a cold. I will say, my kids were sick earlier in the week and they had guidelines they had to follow to get back into school. And we did it and I don't see what the problem was. They had strep, not COVID. They went in, they did the testing, they got diagnosed, they, like, we turned it in. It wasn't like they were quarantined for two weeks for no reason. They weren't quarantined. We turned it in. It wasn't like they were quarantined for two weeks for no reason. They weren't quarantined at all, so... So I kind of had a plan to come up here and address a bunch of misinformation that was frustrating me at the last meeting. But I feel like it's kind of beating a dead horse. I feel like the policy's in place, and we just need to, you know, move on. I do think some really constructive things came up tonight. Like, I'm in full support of maybe some extra time outside for the kids. I think it's amazing. I think that's where we need to find some common ground. I will say, I don't think we're forcing anyone to mask. There are options.
Excuse me, but please be respectful.
Come on.
Kristi, Kristi, please, don't address them. But I am asking the audience to be respectful. No one tackled or laughed when you were speaking.
Quite frankly, if we want to talk about it, something that was said at the last meeting was that the pandemic is over. That if you say the pandemic is over, I'm sorry, you lose all credibility. So... There are things we can do together. You do have choice. When we started the pandemic, and it was kind of in the thick of things at the beginning of the school year in 2020, the choice was CRVA, and the choice was to go in-person, which was still virtual, but could go in-person at any time. Since I'm high-risk, I decided to keep my, put my kids in CRVA. That was my choice. And after a couple days of CRVA, we learned that it just didn't work for them. They just weren't happy. My one daughter just really didn't learn well in that environment. And I did not run here and yell, "You all people," because it didn't work for my family. I realize you're doing the best you can for the most, for the majority of the students. It's not a one-size-fits-all. It's not a perfect system. No, they can't necessarily wear masks when they eat. It's just not ever gonna be a perfect system. But I know you're working to do the best you can for the majority of the kids. So I actually pulled my kids from the district and homeschooled for a while. And I don't envy Newman's because it was not fun, but I did it. It was my choice to do that. And when I felt things were safe, the numbers were lower, I brought the kids back. So I would say, parents have choices. There's CRVA, there's homeschooling, there's private schools. Nobody's forcing you. Nobody's putting your kids on the floor and making them wear masks. The other thing I would say is that... I'm not even gonna go over the numbers because they've already gone over. It's tragic what's happened in our state in the last, just in the last two weeks. I will say that in support of what you've done to this point is that school districts really close to us were not mask-mandated and had a surge in cases and quarantine numbers, and they have also taken the path of a mask mandate. The other thing is that it's just not true that masks are gonna be here forever. In fact, CNN reported today that there are pills that are being tested right now that might be out in the fall or winter to treat COVID, just as we have medicines for other viruses and other illnesses. So I don't see this as being forever, and we know how the COVID numbers dip and rise and dip and rise. But right now, when our county's on a high alert, when we're at one of the worst times we have been in the pandemic, it's necessary. And I just want you to know that the group that I started on Facebook, we're not gonna show up every week and argue this point because, like I said, it's kind of beating a dead horse. But we do want you to know we support you. We appreciate the decisions you've made to protect the majority of the kids and do what's right for the majority of the kids. We also appreciate you getting us the metrics, whether people like them or not. It's based on state, local, and federal guidelines, so we do appreciate that. And I would also just say that we probably won't be here every week. We feel like you've got a lot of important work to do, maybe working on some more time for the kids outside so they can get fresh air. Maybe just moving forward with other issues that are important. But we're not gonna come here and debate this over and over and over again. But thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda that completes public participation is District Administrators Report. Dr. Mueller.
Yeah, thank you. So one thing that we heard tonight multiple times in the public participation was about the metric. And anytime we talk about metrics, like we heard, it's hard to understand and, you know, to clarify and so on. The metric was communicated on September 20th, and that with all of our families. And what I'm hearing tonight is, what we'll do is we'll post more information about that on the website for everybody so that they can understand better on how that works. Yes, it is not easy to understand. It is very confusing, and I'm just validating some of the points they made. Yeah, that's correct. What we did do, though, is we worked on this and did make it develop in coordination with our medical advisor and through other guidelines that we thought would work. In doing that, just in general, really, what they talk about is a seven-day rolling average in these. So I'm not gonna get into details, but what it's like is you could have 10 cases one day, one the next, 15, two. It's a seven-day rolling average type within a school-district boundary area. So it's, you know, lots of different scenarios can be going on in a week. And, you know, we look at that indicator. That's a primary indicator. But we're also looking at, are we having outbreaks in schools? Are, you know, what's happening in our schools too? You know, we're looking at all those pieces. And it could be a very big game changer as vaccination comes out for our younger population of students, you know? And our hope is that between that, and I will say right now, our cases, they, we took a little jump, and now we're back down. I think we're at 17 active cases today. And this is because I can only thank our students, staff, and families are doing mitigation to the best. Are we doing it perfect? It's hard. Masks are hard all day. We're doing our best with it. But every little bit, we do helps in that, and that's all we can do. And that's, I truly believe, what's keeping us in person. I had a conference with many of my superintendent friends this last week, and a lot of them were moving grade levels in schools to virtual this last week because of the surges that they're having in their districts and areas. So I'm just happy that our students are still in person, and they're doing all their activities, and everything's happening, and that's what we want to keep doing, so I appreciate that. Speaking of that, we have our homecoming celebration coming up October 10th through the 16th. And just wanted to share that we're having the parade scheduled on Friday, the 15th at 1:15. So that goes from the Viking Middle School, or Viking Middle School, Viking Elementary, down the main street to our middle school in that. So that will be fun to come out and see. And then, we're gonna have our first annual Eat the Street for Education, which is taking the place of the Pork Feed, and we're gonna have food trucks out there. And for $10, you can get a ticket and get a meal out there. And that will support our Home and Area Foundation and Activities Department, followed by our football game at 7:00, and then a dance is scheduled for the high school on Saturday. So lots of activities and events coming up in the next couple of weeks, and we just want to stay on the path that we're on. So, thank you.
Any questions? Oh, you know, I always have questions, so...
Oh, boy.
So one of the suggestions that was brought up tonight was about getting kids outside and giving them more of that. Those are, those decisions of what they might do with those classrooms, and that are made at the building level, correct? That's where those kind of things are directed?
Yeah, and actually, many teachers are bringing kids outside at different times of day or going on walks. And even at high school, I've seen kids having classrooms out in field areas, grassy areas. Another thing is, is kids are allowed to take mask breaks during the day very often. So even in a gym class, they can go off in a corner, take their mask off if they need to catch the breath. Because, I mean, we all know, to wear a mask for seven hours straight, it's pretty, it's hard. It's difficult. And so you need to allow times for what we call those mask breaks and have, allow that to happen. So, yes, those things are.
So maybe just more of an awareness that those things are actually happening would be helpful.
Yeah, awareness, and, you know, the weather has been beautiful. So some lessons, like a chemistry lab, aren't conducive to do outside, but if we can get outside, you know, we'll have to, you know, we'll make effort to do those things.
Thank you.
I have a question about the homecoming dance. I've heard it's like rumored to be outside. Is there like any...
That's still in the works. Yeah, that's still in the works. No, it's not necessarily for sure outside at this point.
I just think like it might be a struggle for some people because I know a lot of students, especially, like, who have to buy their own homecoming dress. They don't even want to go if it's gonna be outside at the end of October while it's less than 40 degrees outside.
No, so we're definitely, I know they're working through options, and that's so we're able to make good decisions about what we can do. So that's in the works yet. It's not finalized. So, yep, good question.
I just wanted to make sure.
Don't worry, my daughter has told me she's about that too.
I think when they did...
We want to watch the weather. Yeah, homecoming's a little later than normal. So as we know, it does get pretty chilly later in the day. So there's still discussion about how can you have the homecoming dance as safe as possible, and, you know, what time of day, where, so forth. So that is still in discussion. So thank you. I'll make sure.
All right, thank you. Then moving on to recognition and thank you.
Yeah, so I have three recognitions this evening, or, well, two recognitions and a thank you. Would really like to take time to thank Riverland Energy Cooperative, specifically Aaron Tarut, Bill Mason, and Josh Abramzak. And they took and spent their time and just donated their time and equipment and skills and installed aluminum sound poles and wooden protective poles out on the high school soccer field so they can put up a sound system that we have purchased for that venue. So that was their time and all their efforts in doing that is, we thank them so much for that. It's a great improvement for that facility. And then, on October 2nd here, coming up later this week, we need to take time and appreciate our custodians. It's National Custodians Day. This, we need to make sure that they are definitely unsung heroes that walk the halls and classrooms every day, making sure our students have a safe place where they can learn and grow. We just want to thank all of our custodial staff and those that lead them. You know, Bangappa and John Daly have done outstanding through all this, and thank them for their work that they do every day, so. And then lastly, it is next week is our Wisconsin School Board Appreciation Week. And we just want to take time to thank our home and board members for dedicating to ensure that our students are prepared for tomorrow through an engaging, inclusive educational community today. We appreciate your leadership in serving. As we know, it's been challenging through the last 18 months of all this, but everyone has stepped up, and we just thank you for your time and dedication in doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then moving on to reports and discussion. We will begin with the summer school report. Kim Edwards.
Come on up, guys. Good evening, everyone. Come on, Mouse. There we go. Unfortunately, Sue Eitlin wasn't able to be here this evening, so I'll be covering her for elementary. But we also have Mr. Turner and Mr. Baki here, who will be filling us in on our middle school and high school, summer school programs. So, um... Come on. There we go. So our program is really set up to set our students up for success. So we work to reduce or eliminate summer learning loss, provide additional instructional support, accelerate learning, allow for credit recovery, and in general, provide opportunities for enrichment. And that's, those are our goals, you know, in our K-12 system as far as summer schools go. So for elementary, we had our Ready, Set, Learn program. These are our kindergartners. We had 137 students who were able to participate. They were able to do four days at their home building this year, which was really exciting. We did have four staff members that taught two four-day weeks to be able to offer that. And then, lots of kudos to people who helped out. We had our health assistants, nursing school, our nurses in the schools. We had our elementary principals that also helped pitch in, our admin assistants, custodial staff, of course. We even had a high school volunteer, Ryan Mally, who was very helpful as well. And then again, our nutrition services and transportation department that really helped out a lot. Then in our K-4 program, we had our, kind of our standard program, which is our reading adventures and math adventures. And then every grade level had an enrichment activity that had a socio-emotional focus. And you can see what those classes were outlined there for our K through four students. And so we were able to offer this to 305 students who actually participated. They engaged in 14 days of instruction where you had kind of that outline of what they went through. We have our outline, our staff who pitched in there, very much like our Ready, Set, Learn program as well, with all those people coming together to make sure that we had that great opportunity for our kids. And then new this year, we added in double dose. So we had 72 students at the K-4 level who stayed after for an additional dose of intensive reading and math. And so we alternated days in most cases. So students had seven out of the 14 summer school days that they were able to attend for those additional minutes of reading and math instruction. So lots of kudos. Again, just an amazing staff. It was really a great summer because not only did we have new teachers who had never taught summer school for us join the ranks, but we also had additional staff from outside districts who joined home and as well. So that was a really, really great experience. We had lots of EAs, admin assistants, substitutes, and then, you know, the whole list. Again, our nutrition services, transportation, our elementary principals that pitched in. Dr. Mueller came in and visited as well. Our instructional services staff even pitched in to do some classes as well. So it was very much an all-hands-on-deck experience for our kids, and it was really good. So that kind of sums up elementary.
Thank you for having me. Guy Turner, Associate Principal at the middle school, primarily supporting our eighth grade and overseeing our HMS summer school program this last year. We did have an increase in student engagement here this year. Last year being virtual, there was some hesitation talking with a lot of students. Great experience here. A lot of students, as you see, based on our numbers, the engagement levels are coming back. And we did focus heavily on, again, math and language arts. We do have some numbers that do contribute to freshman numbers this year as we do have a mandatory offering based on the school board's grade-level advancement policy. We had 21 students participate during those 14 days. And so we have kind of three tracks here. And enrichment, we focused ELA math, and then we had some, an extension opportunities within our encore electives. This one was put out by staff and asking for input from families. Families were given notification, and then they, rather than canvassing and throwing it out to all students to begin with, we coupled that with the numbers of staff that we had for teaching staff. Worked out really great. A lot of good feedback from that and support from the elementary schools. So thank you to the fifth-grade classes especially to help find those 35 students that did participate, which was wonderful. We also tried something new this year with our enrichment, excuse me, I misspoke here. We had an opportunity for our kids to have more of a block schedule. And in doing that, they were a little more intense, project-based simulation where they created a food truck over the course of 14 days, creating the building project itself, creating a website that went with that, and support from our local community as they did a walking field trip over to QuickTrip and Festival Foods where they looked at prices. They built up their menu and then took margins that they had had at the end of it, which is a great activity where we were allowing families to come in to experience that as well. Had nothing to do with Eat the Street, but a great shout-out to that program that's gonna be coming up here shortly. And then again, like we said, our, following our grade-level advancement policy, we did have eighth-grade students to make sure that we are preparing them to be successful on any skills over at the high school, so having that. We also had within it, one thing that's a lot different, I should say, from last year was we had roaring numbers of students participate in band and orchestra for summer school. And really communicating out to families, this is something that, working with our band and orchestra instructors, they did a phenomenal job of really getting the students, coupling it with best practice for having the students have hands-on participation, which was great. So preparing for Corn Fest and other parades this year, it's the fruit of all the labors and hard work that they did during these days. So they did individual lessons as well as group.
We didn't make any food, but I'm getting hungry listening to all these opportunities.
That one doesn't seem to be doing it, so if we do the down button, we should get...
Thank you.
I can steer it.
My name is Mr. Baki, and I facilitate the high school summer school programs that we run. We really run summer school program for three particular reasons at the high school. Credit recovery, so student... Credit recovery, so a student falls behind on credits, so they're not on track for graduation. Schedule requests or conflicts. This predominantly is in our incoming freshman students. Those of you that know or are aware, somebody who comes in as a freshman, there's a lot of classes that are required for them. So they often will take a summer school class that will help free up opportunities for them to be able to have some electives during the freshman year. And then the last one, which is something we've evolved over the last two years, really this came out of COVID. And I know we very shortly speak on positives that come out of this, but this was something that we've kind of started taking on is trying to work with kids and families where students struggled with classes and trying to eliminate some barriers. And I'll talk about that in a little bit more later. At the high school, we saw roughly five hundred and forty-four students. A lot of those could be double dipped, so it might be a kid that maybe took two classes, but overall, five hundred and forty-four students, well over, you know, half of our students here at the high school. And then we earned one hundred and sixty-eight credits this summer through the high school, which is a phenomenal record that we've held so far. So we've done two sessions. The first session is, this is the optional session. So two hundred and twenty-two students chose, had the option to earn credits over the course of June 8th to July 1. These were predominantly in-person. They had options for online as well. We've kind of evolved again through COVID in terms of what's flexible for students. And so these were just simply sections that we offered and, and students that took those courses. Session two, this is the one that I was kind of highlighting earlier. One of the things that we found out last summer when we offered the opportunity for students to take credit recovery was that one of the barriers we found was families thought it was, it was challenging for families to figure out how to register and how to get involved in the registration process. So what we actually did, and a large thank to our admin assistants, Joanie Whitwer, Casey Anderson, we ran a lot of reports. And so we pulled reports from students that failed and we automatically enrolled them in these sections. And then what we did is we communicated with the families and said, we've already enrolled your child into this section. This is when they're going to meet. This is the teacher that they're going to work with. This is the format for the class. And that really eliminated a lot and drastically increased our success rate. So as you can see, seventy-five of our students failed one of those particular classes for a particular term or a semester. It depends. So maybe a student had a semester-long class but failed one term. We would let them recover just that term because they've already told us that they, they understand the other content. We're not going to make them retake the whole class. And they earned fifty-nine credits. The other thing with this is a major shout out to our teachers. As every program here stated, our teachers have been taxed hard over the last eighteen months. So to have them dedicate some three, one session or two sessions, six weeks of their summertime to come help support students, we can't thank them enough because we can't do these things if, if the teachers don't respond, and they certainly did. In addition, our band, our choir and orchestra numbers also are part of that session two program for here at the high school.
Any questions for us?
Any questions from the board? Brian?
I do have one question because I, and correct me if I'm wrong, with the high school, did, did you guys structure where the kids only had to recover what they failed or missed?
Thank you. Yep.
And so out of that, what was the success rate?
I don't have that statistic for you. I'll start with your second question, but you are absolutely correct. I apologize for not bringing that up. One of the major processes that we've kind of taken on over the past three to four years is, is revamping and revitalizing our PLC process, right? So we're getting course-level teams figuring out what their priority standards are across all teachers. So no matter if you're taking a bio section with me or Mrs. Edwards, we should be getting the same learning objectives taking place. And so what we did for the recovery sections is we had those students take a look at what they failed or what they did not do well, what, what mastery or proficiency they did not meet. And then they had to demonstrate that particular chunk. So for example, if I was teaching a science course, Biology One, and I had three units and a student did not do well in the microbiology section or that particular priority standards, that's what they worked on, that's what they re-taught. Once they demonstrated proficiency, they earned the credits. From an overall enrollment to completion, I'd have to get that to you. I would say overwhelmingly, just generalized, overwhelmingly far more successful this year than we were last year. And one of the major things was that we brought those kids in person. That was a really important thing. So those students came in this summer, worked with the teachers, hands-on, where last summer we had to be virtual. So that, from last year to this summer, a drastic difference. I can get that for you though. Let me do some reporting and I can send that back.
Thank you.
I know when I was recording instructional minutes, credits earned, it was significant over last year.
Awesome. Other questions? Oh, thank you so very much. It's always interesting to hear the report on summer school. So, appreciate it. So staffing, Educational Sign Language Interpreter, Jill Mason. And this item will be on the October eleventh agenda.
Hi, everybody. Okay, so a couple of months, we were here and we were kind of talking about our educational sign language interpreter shortage. And so it, it continues to get worse. So we're here tonight to advocate for our students who need sign language interpreters. We have not found that our, our wage right now is competitive because there's such a need. And so first and foremost, our students who are deaf and hard of hearing need a sign language interpreter as part of their success. In order to do that, we have to have a competitive wage. We have to advocate as a district. And so right now, what we are seeing is a crisis in our nation and a crisis in our state for educational sign language interpreters. We have thirty-two vacancies right now compared to last year. We had eighteen. So we're, we're pretty much doubled that this fall. I've been in conversation a lot with Department of Public Instruction to, to help figure out strategies and supports to advocate for our students. Even when you call agencies, the agencies don't even have availability. So we're continuing to look at those options. I'm continuing. There's some virtual options. We also, I was here at the board a couple of months ago to have a sign language interpreter educational assistant for support that does not meet, meet the letter of the law for their individual education plan, but it is something to provide them, to help them until we are able to find an interpreter. So right now, the other problem is that we only have three programs within the state that only graduate about twelve students and some of the programs take two years. So I've called all the programs in the state and asked if they had graduates. One of them for sure didn't have graduates this year but will next year. So they have all of our job postings as well. So what we are asking is to raise the hourly wage from twenty-three dollars and twelve cents to thirty-two dollars per hour, which would be an increase to the budget of fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. And we do that out of the best interests of our students so that we can find a highly qualified applicant so that we can meet their needs. Any questions?
Any questions?
I'm a little surprised they don't have some, and I imagine they do have some software out there, translation software, where you can actually use the software to translate. Is it, is it, I imagine that's pretty good, but I imagine the question-answer part is the part that gets a little.
Yeah, I think the hard part for, so sometimes that works well if it, if it's, like if you're interpreting a different language. The hard part is when you're, you're interpreting for a student who is deaf and hard of hearing, you actually have to, they have to see it because they can't hear it. So the translation is in, in the sign of their hands. So you could potentially do some of it with software, but it would have to be catching real time with what the teacher is saying. And that's where it gets complicated. We do have options, technology options that there's captioning. And that is what we use for our older kids in addition to some other things. But our younger kids who can't read yet or aren't able to read quickly, like the captions, that does create a problem. But, but you're right, we do have some software capabilities for that.
Rebecca?
Is the thirty-two an hour competitive then?
Yes.
Okay. Just for other districts or other people?
Yeah, we looked at all the districts around us. We looked, took the state average and the state recommendation and that's what we came up with for now. Yep.
I think I saw some hands down here. Questions? No?
Well, is it, is the hope to pull someone from another district or to just?
That's the unfortunate, you're, you know, you're, right, Chris. That, that is not the hope. But, but I think that's the reality and that's what's so unfortunate. We were on a call with DPI last week and that's the exact same thing they said. You know, the unfortunate part is, and, and I always, you know, we always think about this as student services directors, you know, if we do that, we pull from other kids. And no one wants to do that, but it is our job here in this district to make sure that we can meet the needs of our students. So at this point, people move to different places for their own choices and we, we certainly hope that we can be competitive with this. But you're right, it's unfortunate.
Jennifer, did you have a question?
Yeah, so I'm assuming that there's like special credentials or something they need for this and it's not just like anybody who is fluent in sign language.
No, no, and actually, they, they have to take a very rigorous test, a performance test, which is reimbursed by the state. So there's, there's a lot of credentials and there, it's, it's often a two-year program, but beyond that, they have to continue to earn credits and they have to take tests, performance tests to be able to continue to have their license. So it is not an easy process, but the state is trying to reimburse that for them.
Sorry, is it a special certification just for teaching or for school districts or is it an overall, general sign type?
Say that again?
Is it, oh, I'm sorry. Is it more for, is it an educationally-based sign language curriculum that they're signing for? Or is it just an overall American Sign Language Association?
It's, it's ASL, so it's American Sign Language Association. So most of the sign language interpreters we get who apply here have interpreted for other school districts or at the university level. There are other sign language interpreters that do more interpreting outside of here, but most of the, the interpreters that apply here have that educational background. So they know kind of how a school runs and what types of curriculum and, and language that is used with that. Good question.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
On that item. Then the next item under staffing is communication specialists. And Dr. Mueller is going to address that. And that also is on the October eleventh consent agenda.
All right. Good evening. So tonight, I bring before you a position that we haven't had in our district before. This is a position that's been on our underfunded needs request list for the past several years. What this position would be is it would, right now, many of us are spending a lot of our time on communications on an ongoing basis. Multiple staff needed to write individual communications. So this person would actually provide consistency across the district with messaging and provide more, maybe even better timeliness for messaging to our staff families in the greater community. Also, another part is in crisis situations that we have within the district, many of us in our administrative team have to be called to certain roles within an emergency crisis. So to have a spokesperson during those emergency crises and those emergent needs where we need to respond is a critical part. And we have, I guess what you could say is, within our district, we've been just, like we do, we make things work and we do what we need to do. But this would help in that, especially as the times are changing. And then also, just in helping out all of our staff and helping in communicating better even to our community what's happening in our schools and our district and so on. They would oversee our webpage and help with training on that and our social media accounts. We have Facebook accounts for all different things, not only our buildings, but different activities and so on, just to, to help and share stories with that and respond to media inquiries that we're getting and help in coordinating promotional materials. Another thing also is I think in the long term, just really as we start to brand ourselves and think about what that looks like, having someone to, to help with that in, in promotional materials or in just making sure we're getting a consistent message put out there. They would be responsible for the development of the district communications plan would be a big part of it, the role. We did many comparisons, not only, so there's many like positions in the MVC. Nothing exactly matched up. Some, like some districts in the area had a similar position that they had a little more job responsibilities. Some had positions similar that had less job responsibilities. So took that and took other districts that were more like us that had the position and came up with the salary of the sixty thousand plus benefits as being pretty competitive for a role to find someone quality that would have experience and do a successful job with us. So. Any questions?
Brian?
Is this a twelve-month position?
Yes, this is a year-round position. Yep. And the other part about this position, this isn't like a nine-to-five job because this person would be expected to attend events and different things as to get pictures and post, you know, materials on a timely basis as to what's going on and so forth. Yeah, thank you. Anything else?
Any other questions? I just want to say, this is something that we have advocated for, for a while and the importance of it, I think with the pandemic, it just really rang true, the need to have our administration be able to focus on those education-related things and to give you some, I know we always make do. They always say that in education, you make do, but we want to recognize that if we're in the middle of a crisis situation in one of the buildings and parents are hearing these rumors about what's happening, the last thing you want to do is ask your building principals to stop what they're doing and communicate to, to parents, you know, because they are doing the safety and welfare of the children usually at that time. And, but that timely communication is so important. And so that's one aspect of this that they can take that role on. And then just to have a consistent messaging to our families and the community, the greater community because we have more than six hundred staff members. And how many families? I was wondering. I know it's close to four thousand students, but do we know how many families we have?
Well, I know we have multiple families with students, so I don't know the exact number of families, but it's thousands and thousands.
Well, I would suggest, you know, probably twenty-five hundred, three thousand families probably. A good thing for a communications person to figure out.
Yes, exactly.
But I, you know, this is a new position, as you mentioned, in comparison to the other position, the interpreter, that, at that salary, that would be about sixty-six thousand dollars. So we recognize the importance, I think, of some of these positions that are year-round and that sort of thing. So very happy to see this. As I mentioned, it is going to be on the October eleventh agenda. And then if approved, then they would begin the search for, for that person. So. It's exciting. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments related to that? Then we would move on to the consent agenda, which we have five items on the consent agenda this evening. Unless there's anything that you would like to have pulled out and considered separately, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second? A motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Then we will move on to board member reports and discussions. I'll call on board members in the order of their roll call and just ask for you to present any comments or committee reports you have. I would note that the committees are just beginning to organize, so there may not be a lot of those yet. But in the next couple of months, next few weeks, we will start to see those committees actively meeting. So I will start with Gary.
I hate going first. First of all, I'd like to make a correction. From the last meeting, I'd stated that Doug Cornforth, one of our locals, had died of COVID. I did sit down and talk to his wife and Doug had died of, he had a stroke while he was mowing the lawn and he was recovering from the stroke very well. And he had pulmonary, a pulmonary complication that took his life. It wasn't from COVID. And I apologize to her for the error and it's completely my mistake. And I apologize to the entire family. And again, sympathies to them and God bless them. They're a good family. We did lose three more across patients to COVID since the last meeting we had. And as a nation, we're losing a citizen every forty-three seconds to COVID death. I'd just like to point out that I have a little, a little white spot on my shoulder, about the size of a dime, a scar, that most of you don't have, and I'm sure those young ones back there don't have. But that is a smallpox vaccination. Smallpox killed between five hundred to six hundred million people. And in nineteen fifty-one, they started vaccinating people. Matter of fact, George Washington vaccinated his troops at Valley Forge against smallpox. But they started successfully vaccinating people in nineteen fifty-one against smallpox and became mandatory in the late fifties. And since nineteen seventy-eight, there has not been a recorded case of smallpox in the world. So vaccines work. Go out and get your vaccine, get it done. COVID is not going to last forever. The vaccines will improve and improve until we get it under control. So get out and get your vaccines and, and we'll all pull this together and get it, get it done with and move on.
Hey, thank you. Anita? Okay, thank you. Anita Jagzinski?
I don't have a lot, we don't have personnel and governance yet for a couple of weeks. Just a reminder that the Wasby Regional Meeting is October 28th in Onalaska, so feel free to sign up for that, it's always good information. Also, there's Wasby Legislative Conference in Stevens Point on Saturday, November 6th, that I signed up for. And I went a few years ago, I've gone a couple of different times. It's really informative, usually members of the legislature, they're explaining the education funding and taking questions from the audience, and then there are little kind of mini workshops all day. So just something to consider if somebody would want to carpool up on that Friday night before. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Chris Lau?
Just a big thanks to everybody that put on summer school. I know my kids really enjoyed it this year. I know a lot went into that, and it was a good step back for those of us that were virtual to get back into that in-person or in-person learning. So yeah, thanks to all the teachers and staff that put that on, because I know it's no small task.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca Reber?
Quick question, does anybody know if the school store is going to be happening, that every year Mrs. Bruski does that?
Did I say something?
I think they're coming in November to present to us, so.
Okay, yes. That's always a good thing to participate in for Christmas gifts and things for everybody. Another big shout out to the, not the West Salem, the Holman wrestling team, they are selling solar salt. I think it's $7 a bag, and the team will deliver to your door, they will take it in your house and put it where you want it. So I ordered my 10 bags. I don't think they did it last year, maybe they did, but just a shout out as a fundraiser for them.
Yeah, they just weren't allowed to like go in your house and all that stuff.
Oh, you're not?
No, this year is different, but last year was.
So that's kind of a good fundraiser, serves two purposes, you don't have to haul your solar salt and you're doing a fundraiser for the wrestling team. Building and grounds is on October 11th, October 11th, yep. And happy National School Board Week to everybody on the school board, so.
Thank you.
Have a good week, and that's all I have.
Great. Brian Lopet?
Again, we're short with subs and bus drivers and sign language interpreters. So if anyone is looking at helping out, please check out the job postings on WeCan. And thank you to everyone on staff who's kind of stepped up and filled in in those areas of need to make sure that every child is being educated every day.
Thank you. Emily Zach?
I guess I'll start out with my highs first. So our volleyball team is doing amazing. I mean, I don't want to jinx them or anything, but like, they're kind of pretty good. And our homecoming is coming up pretty soon, I'm hoping our homecoming dance can be normal. And I just want to shout out the student services team just for everything they do. Like every time I have to go figure something out with my schedule or take care of something, they're always so supportive. And it's always very, just a good time whenever I'm in there. And I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer Deek?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Chris said and thank all the teachers and staff for a successful summer school this year. I think things went really, really well. And also, I guess with National Custodians Day right around the corner, I want to recognize all the custodial workers in our buildings, especially with the ongoing pandemic of the last couple of years. So I recognize that each of you has put yourselves and families at increased risk to keep our schools safe, so thank you. And I encourage all staff and students to take the time to show your appreciation the next time you see your custodian. And lastly, I wish everyone a great homecoming. It looks like it's got a lot of great activities planned, and just everybody stay safe.
Thank you. Well, I just want to, also the volleyball team, you know, I think it's awesome how they're doing. And I got to go to a volleyball game I haven't been for many, many years. And the rules have changed and how they score has changed, I was like so confused. And so finally, after a couple of times now, I'm catching on to it, but I want to tell you that the middle school program has just been very awesome and quality. And I know that that works its way up into the high school and the success that they're having in the high school. But I just wanted to give a shout out to what I've been seeing in the middle school program. And I even went today and watched, and my granddaughter wasn't playing, and I even went to watch another friend because she wanted to go and help support her friend. And just some of the values that I see coming out of that are awesome. And I know our other athletics, like football is on the upswing now, and they're having some good games. And I know golf, I was looking and seeing they were meeting their goals of what they had set for themselves and actually exceeding that. And so it's just a reminder that we consider those things to be co-curricular, that they're not extracurricular, they're co-curricular. And what that means is that they're learning as much in that classroom, whether it's a field or, you know, a water, whether it's the swim team or a volleyball court or whatever, that they're learning as much in those classrooms as they are in the academic classrooms. And so just a reminder that those things really matter. And summer school, obviously, the success of that and the students wanting to be in-person was well-known, and I'm glad we were able to do that. And Custodians Day, one of the things that we do when we go out on referendum for our buildings is we make a commitment to the community that not only will we build these really nice facilities, but we will upkeep them and keep them in a nice shape. And the community has always told us they're proud of how well we do in that area. And so we don't try to, you know, scrimp on that, we always make sure that we are dedicated. But we know that our custodian, as Dr. Mueller said, the staff that supervise and work with them, work very, very hard to accommodate and accomplish those things. So we really want to thank them for the work that they do to make us proud. Because I know people who have worked for other school districts have said, it's just not the same as it is at home. And there's a real pride in the buildings in Holman, and so you see that. And that is, reflects well when we go to the community and ask them for funds. So I just wanted to acknowledge that as well. I would note that we have a meeting coming up on October 11th, the regular meeting. We also have a budget hearing, an annual meeting, and a board meeting on the 25th. It's kind of our mega-meeting night, starting at 6:00, I think, with the budget hearing. And then we also have, as some people have mentioned, the Wasby Fall Regional on the 28th of October. So unless there is anything else to come before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded and to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned.